Please be seated. Colleagues, I'd like to call to order the 11th meeting of Municipal Council on June 6, 2023. I'll start by reading a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Hodinoshone, Leni Peewak, and Atawandron. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampum Belt Treaty of the Hodinoshone Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Hodinoshone-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnaabik and the Hodinoshone. The three Indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipwaz of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs. I also want to mention that the City of London is committed to making every effort to providing alternate formats, communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this council meeting, you can contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. And with that, I'm delighted to move to the singing of the National Anthem. From June 10 until 18, London celebrates Four City Music Week. This next performer will be a part of the citywide celebrations in Canada's UNESCO City of Music. London, Ontario singer-songwriter Bella Rosa grew up in a home filled with music. Her musical style transitioned from pop to rock before she arrived at alt-pop, a genre that feels like a safe place for her. "I can now write how I feel. Alt can be anything. It doesn't have to be either happy or sad," she says. She admires artists like Billy English, Madison Beer, and Maggie Lindiman, and is influenced by artists like Nella-- Nelsa-- she's going to correct me on this-- Nessa Barrett and the band Evanescence. With over 300,000 streams on Spotify and more than 160,000 listeners in 152 countries, Bella is an award-winning artist making London proud. Please join me in welcoming Bella Rosa at this time.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our eyes comes and cartombras se porte le pey. Il se porte la croix. Ton histoire est une des paupées des plus brillantes et exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Next, I'll move to disclosures of pecuniary interest. I'll look to any colleagues who have disclosures to make for tonight's meeting. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to recognitions, and I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Colleagues, although our citywide London Pride Festival does not take place until July, activities and events are taking place this month as Canada officially recognizes Pride Month in June, and I rise to recognize that today. I want to take this opportunity to recognize that I personally can be here in this chamber today as a duly-elected official because of the work of so many others who came before me, who stood strong in the face of discrimination and oppression, and who stood to say enough was enough and demanded that 2S LGBTQ+ people be treated equally. I want to specifically highlight the 2S part of that acronym because Indigenous cultures long recognized two-spirited people in their cultures as equals, and it was only the arrival of the Europeans that criminalized homosexuality on Turtle Island, another example of the lessons we can learn from our Indigenous peoples. And after centuries of persecution, in 1969 then-Justice Minister and eventually Prime Minister Pierre Trudeau decriminalized same-sex activity with Bill C. 150 and uttered his famous words, "There is no place for the state in the bedrooms of the nation." However, decriminalization was only a step in the fight for acceptance and equality. And we have our own history of discrimination and oppression of the LGBTQ 2S+ community right here in London, of course, with former Mayor Diane Haskett and members of council in 1995 refusing to proclaim Pride Week or former Police Chief Julian Fantino's gay witch hunt. Believe it or not, while councillors like Gina Barber and Cheryl Miller or MPs like Irene Matheson have been participating in Pride festivities for many years, it was not until the 2011 Pride that then-Mayor Joe Fontana and Police Chief Brad Duncan first participated in a Pride parade in this community. That's barely a decade ago, before we had a mayor and a police chief participate in Pride. And it was only in 2018 that the previous council, two previous councils ago, apologized for that 1995 discrimination, thanks in part to support from former councillor Jesse Helmer and current mayor, and then Ward Seven councillor Josh Morgan. And I thank you for that, your worship. But as far as we've come, make no mistake, discrimination and outright threats to the 2S LGBTQ+ community continue to this day. We saw acts of harassment at Wortley Pride last summer, and as recently as today, threats have been made of a repeat attempt to disrupt the event this weekend. And of course, we've seen the outright targeting of the 2S LGBTQ+ community by the council in Norwich, which bowed to bullies and banned pride flags on municipal property, leading to the resignation of councillor Alicia Stubbs in protest. But I want to close by thanking all of you, the members of this council, the members of our senior leadership team, the amazing staff of our PRISM group here at City Hall, who've shown yourself to be allies of and members of a strong 2S LGBTQ+ community in London today. And I want to thank all of those Londoners who've reached out and expressed their support to me personally as I've spoken out against the renewed attacks on our community. So finally, I'm going to borrow a slogan that dates back, at least as far as I could find, to the Stonewall riots in the USA, perhaps farther, but to all the bullies out there who apparently are so insecure in their own sexual identity that they want to intimidate and silence us. We're here, we're queer, get used to it.
Well said, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to move to the podium for two recognitions that I will make. Colleagues, today marks June 6. This is the two-year commemoration of the terrorist attack that claimed four lives on Hyde Park Road and three generations of the Absal family, our London family. On this day, we honor the memory of Talit Salman Medea Yumna. We also remind ourselves of the responsibility each of us have to young Faes, the lone survivor of the attack. We owe it to him and all Londoners to combat Islamophobia, not only on this day, but each and every day. Preventing the spread of hatred is a daily exercise, one that involves the full commitment of individuals, communities, and governments. There's a vigil tonight at Hyde Park and South Carriage Road. I look forward to joining Londoners of all ages, faiths, and backgrounds who will be in attendance. And I want to just remark on an experience that I had as we moved through the initiatives that marked the commemoration. One of the many things I participated of was of significance to me was at the Mack Hyde Park location where there was a circle, I mean, councillor Ramon and councillor Lehman were there as well, where members of the community shared thoughts, memories, stories about the Londoners that we lost. And I'll say that was a very powerful moment for me. It reminded me not only of the impact, the tremendous impact, that those Londoners had on our community, their friends, their neighbors, their families. It also made me think about the lost contributions that they could have made should this attack have not had happened. But I do know that each and every one of those Londoners we lost continue to have a positive impact on our community. As you hear the stories of their accomplishments, the way that they approached life in this community, each and every one of them are inspiring in their own individual ways. And I know through those dialogues that I had with their friends and their family members, I learned much more about each of them and learned what I could be inspired by those four brave souls that we lost two years ago. So at this time, I'd like all of us to just rise and join me in a moment of silence to honor our London family and the four lives that were lost that day. Thank you. I hope to see many of you at the vigil tonight. Well, my second recognition is today is not just a day that we remember here in London, but a day that the world remembers because today marks the 79th anniversary of the Allied Forces invasion of Normandy, which we call D-Day. Nearly 150,000 Allied troops landed or parachuted into the invasion area on D-Day, including 14,000 Canadians at Juno Beach. The Royal Canadian Navy contributed 110 ships and 10,000 sailors. The Royal Canadian Air Force contributed 15 fighter and fighter bomber squadrons to the assault. Our own Holy Roller tank, which now rests in Victoria Park, also landed on Juno Beach that day. Total Allied casualties on D-Day reached more than 10,000, including 1,074 Canadians, of whom 359 were killed. By the end of the Battle of Normandy, the Allies had suffered 209,000 casualties, including more than 18,700 Canadians, and over 5,000 Canadian soldiers died. Now, I know colleagues have heard me say this before, but I will say it again today. We stand here in council chambers, and there's a mace and the ceremonies, and we have our debates, and we get to come in here and express the wills and views of our constituents. I think each and every one of us needs to remember when we enter these chambers, the sacrifices and the lives that were lost to ensure that democracy and freedom in this country exists in the way it does today. And that privilege that we're able to exercise has come at great and tremendous cost through history. And each and every day, I want us to take moments as we enter these chambers and we cast our votes and we have our debates, to think about those who made this chamber possible in our city and in cities across Canada and cities across the free world. There are those who continue to struggle with democracy around the world today, and that democracy is more often under threat than it is flourishing. And I know Canada is a strong ally in the world to free and democratic countries, engages where it can in these efforts. But there are soldiers, who are Canadian soldiers today, who are on the front lines of those fights, who support and train, provide equipment to others. And so although we have the great privilege of being here, safe, secure, and free in this chamber, there are others who are desperately fighting for those privileges around the world, and they do so with the support of Canada, and in some case, some Londoners as well. So in recognition of all those who were lost, including those who made this chamber possible, and include those who were from London, who fought in the Battle of Normandy and D-Day, I wanted to ask everybody to rise again for one last moment of silence today for those who we can remember, lest we forget. Thank you. And thank you again to those who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. And thank you again to those who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. I'll just check to make sure there's no other recognitions. I don't think anybody flagged anything for me. Okay, seeing none. A review of confidential matters to be considered in public, we have none. Council in closed session, we have five items on the regular agenda. There is no added agenda for items for council in closed session. I would look for a mover and a seconder to move into closed session. I see councillor Cuddy seconded by councillor Pribble. Any discussion? Okay, that'll open for voting in the system, and they are for the reasons that are listed on the public agenda.
Closing the vote motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, we'll just be a few minutes as we transition to closed session. For those in the gallery, you'll have to leave while we do the closed session. It shouldn't take us too long, and then the doors will be back open when we resume public session for the public event.
Okay, we're back in public session, colleagues, thank you for that. I'm going to move to item five, which is confirmation and signing of the minutes of the previous meetings. We have the 10th meeting held on May 16th. They'll look for a mover and a second or the, uh, councillor Layman, seconded by councillor Hillier. Okay, any comments or changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, for the first time, we have no communications or petitions. Uh, we don't have any motions for which notice is given, so we're on to committee reports. And we'll start with 8.1, which is the ninth report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. I'll go to Chair Palozza to present that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to put the entirety of the ninth report of the Community and Protective Services Committee on the floor. All the votes were unanimous, and I have no notice to pull anything separate.
Okay, I'll just check to make sure no one wants to have anything dealt with separately, because the chair is willing to put the whole thing. It looks like the chair is good to move the motion.
Thank you. Uh, so all items are moved and on the floor. Highlights include item, um, the London Fire Department establishing and regulating the bylaws. Just a routine update from bylaws, um, from a review from 2006. The outcome of our winter response program report was given, and the London Fire Department single source purchase for bunker gear. Uh, the city found an opportunity to do joint purchasing, which is lovely and wonderful, um, saving thousands and thousands of dollars per item, and with new opportunities to be part of this canoe partnership going forward, hopefully realizing more savings coming back. So thank you to staff for the work on that.
All right, any other comments from colleagues on the items, the whole committee reports on the floor? Okay, I don't see any, so it's moved by the chair. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, that concludes the report.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, item 8.2 is the ninth report of the Civic Works Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Ramon to present that report.
Uh, thank you, and through you. Um, I'd like to put forward the ninth meeting of the Civic Works Committee. The report, uh, is in front of you. Uh, the committee met on May 24th. We had really great discussion, um, about the downtown bike locker pilot project and new traffic and pedestrian signals and pedestrian crossover. Uh, I'm looking to put items one through eight on the floor, and, uh, we'll be pulling item number nine.
So the chair is willing to move a motion for items one through eight. Would someone like something else from that one through eight section dealt with separately? Councillor McAllister?
Um, I would like, uh, item five pulled.
So that-
Or is that not even pulled, sorry, I didn't-
Item five?
Uh, the-
Can you, can you tell me the title, or no?
Uh, no, sorry, never mind.
Okay. Yes, so the only thing being pulled so far is the Automated Enforcement Program Expansion Single Source. Everything else is in the motion, so, okay, everybody looks good with that. So there any comments or questions about the items that aren't, that the chair has put on the floor, which is items one through eight on the council agenda? Chair, I don't know if you have any further comments, or if we can, okay, we'll proceed with the vote then. I'll open that for voting. Chair?
Uh, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Vice Chair McAllister to put item nine on the floor.
Okay.
Okay.
Vice Chair McAllister?
Yeah, thank you, and I would like to put, um, item nine on the floor.
Okay, uh, so the vice chair will put item nine, which is 4.3 from the committee's report, Automated Enforcement of, Automated Enforcement Program Expansion of Single Source on the floor. I have councillor Ramon on the speakers list for comment.
Uh, thank you, and through you, I'd like to amend item nine, um, and include the clause that was contained in the report, clause G, that civic administration be directed to investigate and implement additional red light camera locations, excuse me, as may be, as may be feasible. Um, I'll, I think you-
Just give me one second, and, uh, we'll make sure, I just need to get a tiny bit of procedural advice, and then I'll look for a second. Okay, so the vote was lost on a tie committee, which means there was no recommendation to, from the committee on that, so there's nothing to defeat. So the addition of this is an amendment I'm going to take as a legitimate addition, and I'll look for a second for that amendment. Councillor Trosa is willing to second. Um, we're going to get that up on the screen so colleagues can see it. You'll let me know when. And, uh, I'll open debate on this. Remember, we're at council, so you get to speak once, so use your time wisely. Um, I, I will go to the councillor who moved it, um, to provide, uh, the rationale for the, uh, the moving.
Uh, thank you, and through you. So, uh, we had some discussion at committee about this, and as you'll see, it was a two-two, uh, vote. Um, and what we heard from staff was that there was opportunity to, uh, look at additional locations for investigation and implementation. What we also heard quite clearly is that we do, do see value in this program, that there is value to, uh, to those that are, are driving in their vehicles and, and the types of injuries and the types of accidents that occur when we have red light cameras, um, we see a reduction, uh, which I think is really important. And then we also see that halo effect, that it also encourages better driving behaviors outside of where that red light camera is as well. Um, so knowing that we're seeing value, knowing that we have a program that is, uh, in my opinion, fiscally, uh, a responsible program as well, um, I do see opportunity, uh, with the staff providing their guidance as to where these can be, uh, implemented, and so that's why I deem this worthy to put forward.
Okay, I'll look for a speakers list for debate. Nope, councillor Frank, go ahead.
Thank you, yes, I'll be supporting this as well. Um, I had a friend recently almost get hit, well, she did get hit, her bicycle got hit, um, by somebody's being a red at Wellington and York recently, and, um, I think that not only is this good from a financial perspective, but from a safety perspective, trying to ensure that people who are walking or biking, um, are able to do it safely at some of these major intersections. And I hear constantly, time and time again, that people are running reds because they're getting frustrated, and, and I think there is a very large human cost that we run the risk at if we don't move forward with trying to prevent these. And I think this is one of many components that we do, um, but I think that this one is also one that is fiscally responsible. So I will be supporting this as well, not only because it, it makes sense, but it also, um, could potentially save people's lives.
Other speakers? Oh, councillor Hopkins, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and I'll probably repeat, um, some of the comments that my colleagues have already made, but I will be supporting this. I recall a number of years ago, when we introduced the red light cameras to these 10 intersections, it was quite, uh, a debate, and, uh, we can see that there's a lot of value that we've, uh, received by implementing it. I really like the word, the halo effect, as we, uh, create a safer city to move around, so, uh, definitely supporting this moving forward.
Go ahead, councillor Layman.
Um, thank you, I'll echo what I've heard, uh, so far. Um, just from, again, from police board perspective, uh, we know that resources, uh, that the police have, uh, to, uh, address traffic, uh, situations, uh, have been severely limited. And I think we hear about it all the time in our wards, uh, we hear about excessive speeding, uh, noise, and, uh, and, uh, running lights. Um, would I prefer probably to have a eyes-on view to issue tic, traffic tickets, uh, as opposed to an indiscriminate camera, probably? Um, but the reality is, uh, we have to provide safety on our streets, and, uh, given the constraints that, uh, financial constraints to the police services, uh, I think that this is, uh, this is a prudent way to go.
Deputy Mayor Lewis?
Uh, thank you, your worship, I'll be brief. I, I would actually say, um, unlike councillor Layman, I'd rather have more red light cameras. They can catch everybody who's running a red light, while an officer can only catch one person at a time. Um, so I think that this is a very good investment, uh, very happy to support it. Uh, I only wish we could, uh, ramp up the automated speed enforcement just as quick, but I know there are logistic challenges to that. Um, but I am very supportive of this. Um, I think I've been very, very clear, it's not that hard to follow the rules of the road. Uh, the light is red, you stop. You don't want a ticket, you follow the rules of the road, and red means stop. So let's get these in, and let's get them up and running as quick as we can.
Councillor Trosa.
Thank you very much. Um, I moved, I moved this amendment at the committee because I wanted to give the staff the opportunity to expand the program, uh, as far as they feasibly could. Um, there was really no opposition to this, um, program. Uh, it was very well received, uh, it was very well received by a four to nothing vote of the committee, and what we're actually debating right now is not the implementation of the program, which is in the, in the main, in the main, uh, the main body of, of the motion, but the additional language, uh, to authorize our staff, to direct our staff, to ask our staff to, to see if we can, uh, push this a little, a little further. So I think, I think this makes a lot of sense, and it'll save a trip back to the committee, and, uh, hopefully we'll get some good news from our staff that there's, um, that there's room for a little bit more, and, um, I'm hoping our staff can, um, maybe add some context to this, because it sounds as if we're debating the merits of the red light program, and we're not.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and we appreciate the time between committee and council to review our numbers. Staff had proposed expanding the program by an additional 10 cameras. We're confident that we can expand it by about 20 within the context of, uh, the resource limitations for processing, the courts, appeals, those sorts of issues that underlie the, the, the program itself. So we are confident we can put in 20 new cameras, and we look forward to moving that forward, should that be the choice of council today.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, so this is the amendment, um, which you can see before you on the screen, uh, that's, uh, the civic administration be directed to investigate and implement additional red light camera locations as they may be feasible. You've heard some, I see, I see you councillor Van Meerebergen, um, you've heard some information from our staff, as well as, as what that means in context, and I'll go to the next speaker, which is councillor Van Meerebergen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The, um, I ju, I just wanted to confirm, we're, we're now looking with the expansion of 20, uh, intersections, uh, under this program, and I, I wanted to ask staff, at what point will there be diminishing returns? Because we're using intersections that maybe don't really have a problem or an issue, and do we run the risk of having to fund it, uh, out of our own budgets? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, the, uh, the program is basically self-sustaining, uh, but at what point does that, uh, balance tip? Uh, because we do have diminishing returns. So I'd like to ask staff, uh, is that a risk we run if we go more than 20? Because that was the, uh, the number that staff had originally recommended.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Certainly this program is meant to be self-sustaining, and any revenues in excess of the program are directed to road safety. There is a risk absolutely at some point in the future, in a perfect and a hopefully ideal world that we get to, that we aren't generating revenue because the behavior has stopped. Right now, we do believe there are enough intersections in the city where this, uh, this technology can be helpful from a safety perspective, that we do not believe that there's any risk in terms of long-term financial commitments the program cannot fund. That is also one of the reasons we're cautious about massive ramp-ups in that program, to add a permanent staff, those sorts of things. If those revenues don't materialize in the future, then we would not have a source of financing. At this time, with what's being recommended here, we're confident it can continue to self-fund over the reasonable attrition of people who'd be involved in supporting it.
Okay. Uh, any other speakers? Sorry, councillor Van Meerebergen, do you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, so, will staff inform us if they, when they do their investigation to go above the 20, uh, if they feel that it is sustainable and worthwhile to go those few extras, a few extra intersections? We will be told, we will have a report back on that.
But perhaps, if staff could comment on what the councillor's suggesting, and, how they interpret the "as may be feasible" portion of the motion, because I think this seems to be what the councillor's referring to.
Thank you, your worship, and that's an important part of this motion. So a number in the range of 20, we have not investigated all of those locations. We believe that's where we have capacity. We are fairly sure we have enough intersections that would meet reasonable criteria with this great preventative technology. If we review and the number is 16 or 18, then that would be the number we would recommend implementing, and we are happy to provide an information report back to council once those decisions are ready for consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor. Any other speakers on this? Okay, so the amendment is moved and seconded. Uh, this is just on the amendment, I'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to zero.
Okay, so now I need a mover for nine, and maybe, I don't know, Chair, if you're willing to do it now, as amended. I need a second for the as amended motion as, as well, seconded by councillor Hopkins. So this is now, uh, the committee's original, uh, recommendation, plus the amended motion, which is now part of it, moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to zero. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
And I think concludes, right? Perfect. Thank you to the Chair and Vice Chair for tag teaming that. Next report is 8.3, the 16th report of SPPC. I chaired that, but I'm chairing this meeting, so I'll have Deputy Mayor Lewis present that report.
Thank you, worship. I have not been made aware of anything in the 16th report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee that colleagues wished to have pulled to be dealt with individually. So I'm prepared to put the whole report on the floor unless there's something colleagues wanted to vote on separately.
So this is the 16th report, item 8.3. The Chair's willing to put all items, 1 through 9, on the floor. Would anybody like anything there dealt with separately? Counselor Van Meerebergen.
Yes, I'd like 2.4.
So the Governance Working Group report? Yep.
Yeah, that could be pulled separately. And I just wanted to confirm that the report that we had on the climate change report from staff, we can vote on A and B separately?
Yes, we can divide up the motion, as you can see it in the committee report. So that sounds to me like you'd like 4, which is 4.1, the Climate Emergency Action Plan Progress Report, voted on separately as well?
Correct.
And it's just A and B that you want separate?
Yeah, if I can get A and B separate, just like we did at committee.
Okay. So that means, Chair, it sounds like you can make a motion for 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8, unless anybody else is looking for something separate.
Yeah, so I will move the entire report exclusive of 4 and 9 on the council agenda, which are 4.1 and 2.4 on the committee agenda.
Okay, so the Chair's moved everything except the Climate Emergency Action Plan Progress Report and the first report of the Governance Working Group. Those will be dealt with separately. Any discussion on all of those items, or any of those items? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that motion for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
And, your worship, I'll put item 4A on the floor now, and then we'll deal with item 4B separately. The A part is to receive the report. So what the Chair is putting on the floor is to receive the staff report, so everybody knows further voting. So that's moved by the Chair. Any discussion on receiving the report? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll open that for voting momentarily. This is just for A, to receive the report.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
And I will now put clause B on the floor.
Okay, we're going to get that up on the screen so people can see. Clause B has four parts to it. So that'll be moved by the Chair. While that's getting up on the screen, I'll look for any speakers to this part. Okay, so that's up on the screen, so we'll open clause 4B and all of its parts for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 2.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, worship. I'm now going to put item 9. This is the 2.4 from the committee agenda. This is the first report of the Governance Working Group. I do want to just note very quickly that we did make a small change at committee with regard to the proposed calendar, which would see the Planning and Environment Committee move to Tuesdays at 1:00 p.m. in Week 1, and that in Week 2, the Corporate Services Committee would move to Monday at 1:00 p.m. So it was switching the two spots for those committee items in the calendar, and the logic of that being it allows a little more time for communications on planning applications to come in, and increases the opportunity to add additional planning committee meetings as needed.
Yeah, and I'll just note, based on that change, it's to bring a draft calendar forward under those parameters. It's not to approve the calendar yet.
Yes, all the other clauses remain the same, including the senior leadership comments to be provided back to the next Governance Working Group before the Governance Working Group brings forward a final recommendation through SPPC, and then eventually to council on next year's calendar.
Okay, any questions or comments on the Governance Working Group report, which is what's on the floor now? Counselor Hopkins, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I want to thank the working group. It was a long day, and lots of work was to be had there. I do want to, I made a point of it at SPPC, and I think I'll bring it forward here at council, that the draft calendar that is going back to staff is a draft to look at daytime meetings. I'm okay with supporting it in draft form, but I still want to make it known that I am not fully convinced that we should go to full-time meetings, especially when it comes to public participation meetings, and having opportunities for the community to participate in the evening. So welcoming the draft coming back to us, and looking forward to having a further conversation at the working group. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open this for voting. This is on the Governance Working Group report.
And that concludes the 16th report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee.
Great, thank you. Item 8.4 is the ninth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Lehman, and just note that I believe there's an amendment sheet for a few items in your report as well.
Thank you. And before I put any items on the floor, I'm going to just read, it being noted that any and all written submissions relating to applications that were made to the Planner and File, the Planning and Environment Committee, and to the Municipal Council, as well as oral submissions made at the public meeting held under the Planning Act, have been on balance, taken into consideration by council as part of its deliberations regarding these matters. As the mayor said, I will pull 10, 13, and 15, because there are some housekeeping amendments, and you have the amendment sheet in front of you as well. I will have requested that item 7, 2.6, be pulled. I have had no other requests for any other items.
Okay, so the Chair wants to move a motion for everything on the committee with the exception of 7, which is a heritage alteration permit at 27 Bruce, and then three items which are related to technical amendments, and just cleanups of the language, which is 10, 13, and 15. So would anybody like anything else dealt with separately? Okay, go ahead, Chair, you can craft a motion.
I will put all items on the floor excluding 7, 10, 13, and 15.
So those items are on the floor. Counselor Hopkins, are you looking to comment, or no?
Don't comment.
Comment? Okay, go ahead. You can comment now on those items.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on number 16, which is the PPM for Oxford Street East and Clement Street. I am supportive of the recommendation going forward, and I know it's an infill. And even though I have concerns, but it is an appropriate development for intensification. It's right on the Rapid Transit corridor, and it's an underutilized site, so I'm okay with that. But I do have concerns going forward. And one of the concerns I have is really, as we are about to do, is to approve the zoning application. That really ends the public conversation. And when we see these intensifications coming into neighborhoods, they do change the neighborhoods. And the community does have concerns, and there's no really opportunity for them to inquire. So I would like to, through you, your worship, as staff, if there are or can be further opportunities, or what is the process moving forward for the public to understand and to sort of be aware of the application as it goes through the site plan process?
Through you, Mr. Chair. In terms of the public process, as you mentioned, the public process is closed. However, when the site plan application does come in, there's opportunities for the public to reach out to staff, to understand the process, to understand what the site matters are, boundary trees in this case for this one particular site, and those remediation measures that staff can undertake as part of the Site Plan Control Bylaw. But having said that, there's no input in terms of matters for consideration for the site plan approval authority, but it is a conversation to understand that process, as you mentioned.
Yeah, I just want to thank, through you, your worship, to staff for that information. I know and understand, and I think it's important that the public understands that there is no input. But understanding the process, still being able to inquire how, where the application is, is available to them, and it can be done by reaching out to staff, I would like to make sure, if anyone's listening, to these intensifications that will change our neighborhoods, it is important that public participation is being taken away as it goes through a site plan process. But there are opportunities, if the community is still wanting to know a bit about the process going forward, that they can still inquire. So, thank you.
Counselor McAllister.
Thank you, and this is in regards to number 8, the closed school site and evaluation approach of 1040 Hamilton Road, the former Fairmont Public School. And I want to thank Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Lewis and Counselor Frank for supporting the motion to investigate the possibility of purchasing the land. I just want to express my ward's desire to see this site utilized. There is a great deal of interest, obviously, in affordable housing, and I was also pleased to see that included. And I would encourage, as this comes back to us, that we look at it, and I hope that we do purchase it and are able to build some affordable housing, as there is a great need in the city, not only in my ward, but yeah, this whole city in general. So, thank you.
Any other speakers for the items that are before us? Okay, if not, the Chair's put together a motion with a number of items, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Chair?
Thank you. I'd like to put number 7, which is 2.6, Heritage Alteration Permit regarding 27 Bruce Street, on the floor. Or, oh, yeah, I guess on the floor now, yeah.
Okay, that's on the floor. Counselor Lewis, or Deputy Mayor Lewis, sorry.
Thank you, your worship. So I originally supported this at committee. And then I've had the opportunity to give it some more thought. And I actually tuned in originally to listen to Counselor Frank's podcast on the Craig Needle Show, but then I listened to the next episode. And that featured Robin Schwartz, who went to school here in London at Western, at the University of Western, but who now is in the regional municipality of Kitchener-Waterloo, and who sits on the Heritage Advisory Committee there. And her studies actually make her very qualified to sit on that committee. And I listened to her talk about how the discussion was framed around what is really heritage, and what is, quite honestly, NIMBYism presenting itself as heritage protection. And I listened with great interest as this woman expressed, from her own professional training and background, and her own experience on a heritage advisory committee, how restricting people from making improvements to their home by overly prescribing materials that they can use is really actually detrimental to preserving legitimate heritage. It is expensive. It often doesn't last as long, because the materials are of a quality that can't survive the elements as long. And when we're talking about these things, and in this particular case, in this particular application, it's a wooden porch. It's a porch that was in absolute disrepair. And the complaint and the reason for denial of the Heritage Alteration Permit is not because the porch was replaced by something that looks radically different than what was there. No, the reason for refusal is because it's vinyl and not wood. And I think about this, as we tell property owners, we want them to, you know, preserve heritage and preserve the heritage conservation districts. And in this case, let's be clear, this property's not a Part IV designated property. Its designation comes from being part of a heritage conservation district, not as part of an individual attribution to this building, but only as a result of being part of a conservation district. So I started thinking about the burden we're placing on homeowners, the cost. And also, when we think about some of these other alteration permits that we've seen come forward, what we're doing in terms of, we just had a vote pulled on climate change. Well, when we're telling homeowners they have to use materials of a previous century to repair their home in the name of heritage, rather than let them pursue more energy-efficient upgrades to their home, and particularly where they're not changing the appearance of the property. And I took the opportunity to drive by this property after listening to the podcast. Colleagues know I've had some problems with a knee lately. I was over to see my massage therapist, who's in Mortley Village. So I had the opportunity, in fact, on Bruce Street. So I had the opportunity to see this property by walking past it, not even by driving past it. I know Counselor Frank will appreciate I was walking in her ward and not contributing to GHDs with more driving around. But as I looked at this, I thought, this is, to me, and I don't mean any disrespect when I say this, but this is just not reasonable, to say that now they've got to tear out this vinyl porch that they've put in, that looks perfectly in line with every other home on the street, and replace it with a wooden one. A wooden one that they'll probably have to replace again in 15 or 20 years, because wood deteriorates much, much faster than vinyl. So I'm not going to support the committee recommendation on this. I'm going to vote against it, and if it fails, then I'll put forward an alternate motion to approve the Heritage Alteration Permit. So thank you for listening. I encourage colleagues to take an opportunity to listen to that podcast, if not on this issue, for consideration in the future issues, because it was really enlightening to me.
Okay, so you're speaking against the motion on the floor. I will note that if colleagues agree with that direction, you do have to defeat the committee's recommendation to put an alternate on the floor. So there's no amendments here. It's just, you'd have to proceed with defeating the committee's recommendation if you want to do something different. So I'll continue with any speakers on this matter. Oh, the Chair? Go ahead.
Thank you. And this is one of those items, it was on the consent item, and we had a pretty heavy agenda. I saw it, I noticed it, and it did trouble me, so I kind of looked at committee to see, you know, other comments, or if anyone wanted to pull it. They didn't. But I think we've all had those instances where something's niggling at, right? It wasn't, there's something wrong with this. So I did think about it, and kind of wavering what I should act on or not, and then actually Deputy Mayor Lewis spoke to me about it. And we had a discussion, and I think he had upon all the reasons. You know, it's You know, it's, replace it with wood, it's going to rot again. Then you replace it with vinyl. It's not a heritage designated building, it's in a district. You know, it's, I think we have to be cautious here. We're going into times of infill and repurposing buildings. We can't let heritage get in the way without, I understand the value of heritage, and I appreciate that, and I support that. However, you know, in this particular case, for, again, the reasons that Deputy Mayor pointed out, I'm inclined to, inclined to agree with him. So I will not be supporting it either.
Other speakers? Counselor Frank?
Thank you. Yes, this one's interesting, because I actually don't necessarily disagree with my previous two colleagues, because when you look at the image, the before and after, it still looks like quite a quaint heritage house. I will remind colleagues that if installation, even though it independently, as an independent house, didn't go through the whole process, the whole area is protected, and we've had this discussion a couple times. And the person did replace the front porch with both pressure-treated wood, so the base was replaced, and then also the spindles and the railings and that kind of stuff was replaced with plastic, which plastic isn't necessarily the best for the environment either. We are trying to reduce our use of plastic, so it's not necessarily the best. I do hear, though, the thing that, I guess bothers me about sometimes, is that this person did go through the cost expense to replace it. And I do worry, I don't know if then these plastic spindles will be sent to a house maybe in Ward Two or Ward Seven or Ward Eight, and I'm not really sure if they'll be repurposed. So it would be wasteful to throw them out, and that does kind of bother me. At the same time, that all being said, I also don't want this to be precedent that anyone can go ahead, replace a porch, use the wrong materials, use plastic, and if it kind of looks like what it's supposed to look like, we're okay with it. You know, I just don't like the message that sends to the community, especially many of us have heritage conservation districts, and I think, again, then this would apply, you know, you're not supposed to use plastic, that's in our policy. That is why staff are recommending the refusal, because they're following the policy that we've made. So I see both sides of the coin, and I found this one difficult as well. I just don't personally want to start a precedent that replacing, one, without getting a permit, and then, two, replacing something with plastic is going to be allowed. And I do worry a bit about that. So I don't know if there is a way to ask staff if we were to approve this, if that sets a precedent that would allow other people to come forward replacing wood materials with plastic, which goes against our policy.
Go ahead.
Through you, your worship, it could set a precedent. And the issue with this one in particular is they made the construction without going through the proper process, making that application for the heritage alteration permit, and then seeking approval after the fact. I will also mention that it's not replacing the full porch with their, through this recommendation, it's certain elements of wrapping the posts, as we've talked about, not replacing the deck and certain aspects of that. So it is like that compromise solution that staff are recommending if they were to proceed this way, but the refusal is because it's not consistent with the, with the heritage conservation district.
Thank you, yes. So, again, that's kind of more my worry as a precedent-setting part of it, not necessarily like this specific one. If I, you know, I can, it looks nice, it looks heritage-y. I'm not a heritage expert, so I don't really know exactly what that is, but heritage-y to me, especially when you compare it with some of the other houses that maybe have done some replacements in the area that were before we had the conservation district. You can see they've made an effort, and I applaud them for it and appreciate it, but it's more the precedence setting that worries me. And if, almost if anything, I wish there is a way that, like, they could perhaps pay a fine or replace the spindles, because I actually, again, think that there should be penalties if people go forward without getting the proper permits and without following our process. But I do think it's wasteful to throw a bunch of things into the garbage. So, all to say, I will be supporting staff in this recommendation because of my worry of the precedent setting, but I completely understand and can relate to the previous two speakers and their concerns about making this, you know, kind of bad for the homeowner. It's a tough time, and I do appreciate that the person has already made an investment, so.
Okay, thank you. I have myself next on the speakers list, then Counselor Hopkins, so I'll turn the chair to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
And this is the part where I get to sit at council, because I'm chairing, but I will now recognize the mayor.
Yes, and I get the stand. Everybody's a winner. I want to ask a question, because here's my dilemma here. As, I heard, I heard an answer from staff that said it may set a precedent, and I hear council is now making a decision based on that, that it could or will set a precedent. So let, let me ask this a different way, because I think being very clear on this is probably important. If we were to allow this today, are we obligated to allow similar items in the future? I know people can see us make a decision and bring more things forward, but legally, would we be bound under some sort of appeal or mechanism to, to have to make the same decision, or would someone have the right, if we weren't consistent, to go in and challenge us in some sort of judicial process that we would be vulnerable on? In other words, I actually want a more definitive answer on, does this set a precedent from a decision-making process or not?
Through your worship, just to be very clear, if we, this same instance happened in the future, and we have the same planning framework that's in place right now, we would come back with the same opinion to you. It's not going to change, from a precedent perspective, how we review these moving forward. So council can make these specialized decisions in certain situations, so it will not actually change how we would process an application in the future. So from that perspective, it's not, it's not creating a precedent.
And my follow-up to that is, I understand staff won't change the way they bring things forward, that we could make a decision one way or the other. Is there an appeal mechanism to municipal council's decision on this that someone could take to a different level, or are we the final arbiter on this particular matter? Mr. Mayers?
Through your worship, I would defer to legal on that question.
Well, let's see if we have, oh, Mr. Card is with us on Zoom. Mr. Card?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. What I would say is that the decision constitutes a precedent in fact, but not a binding precedent in law. So going back to the mayor's earlier question, would this be binding on a council in the future if the matter were to come forward in the same way? The answer is no. You can always distinguish that situation, and I've heard a number of comments from various members of the council this afternoon that recognize certain attributes or merits of allowing the existing material to remain. You could distinguish that from some future situation that you found to be different. So it wouldn't be binding on you if the matter were to come forward with respect to another property in the future.
Mayor Morgan?
Thank you, that ends my comments. I just wanted to be clear on that, because I wasn't sure. I see, though, Chair, that there's one more flagging from staff on this. Okay, Ms. McNeely.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to mention that it is appealable by the property owner to the Ontario Land Tribunal.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And Mayor Morgan, I will return the chair to you.
Okay, I have Counselor Hopkins next.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and thank you to my colleagues for this conversation. I think it's an important one. I just want to follow up with the last comment. This is appealable. So getting back to my colleagues suggesting that we go against the committee recommendation, I will not be supporting it. And one of the things, I understand it's not binding with future recommendations or applications coming forward, but my big concern here is that the process was not followed in this situation. And since the process was not followed, that is my biggest concern, because I do not want to support residents or anyone not following our processes. We, we have them, we have our bylaws for reasons. They should matter, and we as a council, if we're not going to support our processes, then I think it's really important that we change our policies, and maybe that's the better way to go. But these one-offs, I think, do create a, a, a challenge, and the precedent setting is one thing, but supporting applicants that do not follow their process is a concern for me, so I will be supporting the committee's recommendation.
Counselor Trosseau?
I'm less concerned through the chair, I'm less concerned about the precedent, because, yes, the facts can always be, the facts can always be argued. Perhaps in the next case, there'll be more of a visual problem than, than, than we have here, and I, I do appreciate what Counselor, what Deputy Mayor Lewis and others is saying, but I, I'm going to support the staff recommendation, and it's not because I want to be too rigid, and I understand that we have to give people some latitude, but you have to follow the process. And I think it would be one thing if the applicant came in and asked before they did it. And we just can't keep having that, because I see the, I see the cumulative effect around the city of, of property owners just sort of picking and choosing which bylaws they decide they're going to follow. If, if we want to change the heritage bylaw, and maybe we should, we should, we should do it, but for, at least for now, I want to support the staff report, because I, I think property owners should be, should be complying with what the requirements in this special legislation is. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Oh, Counselor Cuddy, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, your worship, I'd like to ask staff if the homeowner still is required to pay for the permit fees. Thank you.
We need your microphone.
Thank you, through your worship, yes, that would be the case. And any remediation, that they would have to fix the porch, the elements of the porch as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? So this, there's, I will remind colleagues that it is the staff recommendation on the floor. Some people would like to defeat that and do something different, some people would like to support that and go with the committee's recommendation. I just want to be clear, if there's no amendment on the floor, it's the staff recommendation on the floor. Okay, I don't see any further comments, so we'll open that for voting. I'll just indicate that although you saw Counselor Ploza leave the meeting, she's actually joined us digitally, so colleagues know.
Closing the vote, motion is lost, seven to seven.
Okay, so the committee's recommendation is defeated. I see Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. I will put a motion on the floor that the heritage alteration permit for this property on Bruce Street be approved. And I'll just remain standing for a moment in case I have to.
If you're making a motion, you get to stand the whole time. So I'll look for a second or for that motion. I see Counselor Hillier. So this is a new motion, so we can have debate and discussion on this as well. I'll look for speakers. Okay, I don't see any, so this is a motion to approve the heritage alteration permit. I'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries nine to five.
Okay, back to you, Chair.
Thank you, I'd just like to confer with a clerk for a second.
Sure, go ahead.
I will go to number 10, the first of three items that we will have to, look to amend for housekeeping purposes. Number 10, we have the amendment before you. The rationale is that the map was inadvertently missing from the bylaw, so I would like to move that amendment, Chair.
Okay, so that amendment needs a seconder, so I'll look for a seconder. I see Counselor Ramon is the seconder. Any discussion on this, rather?
Which title item?
I'll go to the chair to just identify the item that we're on and what you're doing.
We are on item 10, 3.1. This is regarding 340 to 390 Saskatoon Street. And before you, you have an amendment sheet? Okay.
All right, any other questions on this? Okay, we'll open this for voting. This is on the amendment that the chair is bringing forward.
So I would like to put, I would like to move that as amended.
Okay, as amended, needs a seconder, so I'll look for a seconder. Counselor Ramon, any discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you. To move to number 13, which is additional residential unit amendments as a result of More Homes Built Faster Act. The rationale for the amendment is the previously considered bylaw reference, the London Plan, instead of the official plan for the City of London 2016. So I would like to move that amendment.
Okay, amendment is moved by the chair, it needs a seconder. I'll look for a seconder. Counselor Cuddy, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
So I'd like to move item 13 amended.
Item 13, as amended, I need a seconder for the as amended. See Counselor Hopkins. I will have discussion, Counselor Trosseau?
Yes, through the chair, I did, I did want to pull and discuss item C, that the civic administration be directed to undertake a review of the current five-bedroom limit and report back. So could that be pulled from the rest of the motion and discussed separately?
Just give us a second on that. I'm going to ask the chair if he can, so we've made the technical amendments, now we're back to the kind of main motion as moved and seconded. A council would like to have Part C debated separately, so in consultation with the clerics, it seems like it's easy to do that as the first item we deal with. We can make a decision on that, and then we can vote on the remainder of the items. So Chair, I'll see if you're willing to put just 3.4C on the floor. So Chair, I'll see if you're willing to put just 3.4C on the floor.
Yes, let's put C on the floor.
Okay, and because this is amended, I'm going to ask for the same secondor if she's willing to... No, okay, I need a secondor for just 3.4C. Deputy Mayor Lewis is willing to second. So just 3.4 clause C, which is the part about undertaking a review of the current five-bedroom limit and report back to future planning, is on the floor. I'll look for discussion now, Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you, and through the Chair, I'd like to start by asking staff what the rationale would be to, in addition to making all of the changes that were mandated by the province, why we would also undertake this particular change, which is a very major change.
Through you, your worship, it was a direction from committee to ask for the consideration of the five-bedroom limit. As we do know, that the near-campus neighborhood review did require ultimately a three-bedroom limit. And through that review, subsequently, the five-bedroom limit was applied citywide. And through the review of the additional residential unit, it was discussed as part of this to consider looking at that five-bedroom limit citywide.
Counselor?
Through the Chair, does the current legislation, as it's been amended, allow the city to continue applying a differential through different neighborhoods based on whether it's, for example, the near-campus neighborhood or not? Because that would be a very important consideration here.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr., your worship, there is no requirement. This is a city mandate in terms of the near-campus neighborhood. And the five-bedroom limit is, in this case, would be unique to London. As compared to other municipalities, there's no limit that I'm aware of.
Counselor?
Thank you, through the Chair, I would like to request that we pull item C. And the reason for that is, this is a long, long discussion that has a lot of history. And I know that we're doing this because we're implementing the provincial mandate. But I think to open up this issue, I should ask staff through the Chair, is that something that you can easily do? Or is that something... Because your original recommendation was to retain the five-bedroom limit.
Mr. Mather's.
Through you, your worship, just to be very clear, this wasn't brought forward by staff. This came up through the discussion, and it was a resolution that was brought forward by the committee. So we will take direction from the committee. There were the recent changes from the province. It doesn't preclude having a limit such as is in place right now, or having a limit in certain areas. However, if it is the direction of council to take back this back and analyze it, we would add that to our work plan, noting that we do have a lot on our work plan currently.
Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you. In my view, you cannot have a reasonable discussion about removing the five-bedroom limit without at the same time having a discussion about the enforcement of the boarding house by law. Because one of the objections historically, which led to the institution of the five-bedroom limit, was the way that some property owners were overpacking properties relating to a lot of other problems. And we do have a boarding house by law. It's been my view that it hasn't been enforced as well as it can. And I think that once we start raising, removing this additional protection that neighborhoods have, if you want to do that, I think it should be brought forward as a separate item in conjunction with the question of the boarding house by law. But to just do this in isolation, I think is not good policy and flies in the face of a lot of history in terms of why this was brought forward. So procedurally, do I need to make a motion to remove C? Or should I ask for it to be voted on separately?
Well, we're debating it separately, so you can vote on it separately. But just let me confer on your procedural option. So Counselor, just let me give you some advice, because we're at council. Given this is a matter that has made it to the council floor, if we defeat it, it will become a decided matter of council. Your other option is if you want to have a larger discussion about this, is you could refer this piece back for that larger discussion that you'd like to have. If we either pass it or defeat it here, if we pass it, that action will be taken, and there would be a review and a report back. If we defeat it, we will have decided not to do that. And so that would create potentially a binding precedent for us not to review that for a period of time without reconsideration of council. So your two options are, if you're happy with that option, you could just defeat it. If you want to refer it back for some other discussion, you could also make a motion for referral.
Through the Chair then, my preference would be to defeat this addition, because I think it's going to raise a lot of other issues. However, I would be very happy to have a separate discussion about this in conjunction with the boarding house issue. And I believe that if this is brought up in conjunction with the boarding house issue, that would ameliorate some of the harm that I see coming from this. So would the mover of this motion either be willing to defer it for now or accept as a friendly amendment adding in a thorough review, which is going to add time with respect to the boarding house by law?
So the mover of the motion doesn't have a choice. The committee report is being presented. This is a committee direction. And so it really has to dispense with the committee recommendation in some way. So you can defeat it, you can refer it back to committee, and you can add the piece in conjunction with a discussion about whatever else you'd like to discuss. Or it passes, the essential alternatives that you have before you. But we should, we have to dispense with the committee's motion in some way.
Okay, so I would like to then suggest that we refer this back to the committee for further discussion on only C.
So it's only C on the floor at the moment? So the motion would be to refer C back to Planning Committee for a discussion, a further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
A secondor for the referral. Counselor Lehman, you're willing to second? Okay, so a referral takes precedent. So the motion on the floor is now to refer C, clause C, which is the only thing on the floor, back to Planning Committee for further discussion. I will take speakers now on the referral. And I have, let me just make a list. Okay, speakers on the referral are Counselor Ramon, Counselor Frank, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Lewis, and Counselor Hopkins so far.
Thank you, through you. I won't be supporting the referral. I do think that Counselor Frank, when she brought this forward, spoke quite powerfully to the rationale behind bringing this forward. Additional residential units, if we're going to contemplate them, we have to contemplate them fully. And I think that that happens within the five-bedroom, exploring the five-bedroom limit. I understand why, and I appreciate Counselor Trosaw and his thoughts on this. And again, this is for staff to take a look, bring it back to planning. So to me, that gives us the opportunity to then have further conversation, allow the community to participate in that conversation in the future. Thanks.
Counselor Frank.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Ramon quite succinctly kind of emphasized what I was going to emphasize. But I was just hoping to get a further examination by staff. I know that there is quite a lot of history with this file. But that's from previous council, and this is a new council. There's new sets of eyes on this. A lot of things have changed in the last four years, as I mentioned at that PEC meeting. And I think that it warrants a second look. I'm not saying that we are already making any kind of decision at all. This is simply, I just want to understand better what the limitations are, what restrictions should be there. Is this a possibility? So it's really just more information. And as Deputy City Manager Mather said, they have lots on their plate. I don't imagine that this is going to rise to the top, and that's fine. I just think eventually, if we are going to be doing ARUs, as Counselor Ramon said, we need to make sure that we have looked at everything. And if this is not a stone we want to lift up and go under, then I'm okay with that. But I'd at least like to understand, you know, should we look at this or not as a possible way to augment how many bedrooms we have across the city and existing neighborhoods? So I will be supporting the original motion from committee. Thank you.
Okay, and there's a referral on the floor, so people are speaking to the referral. So that sounds like against the referral, but I'll let you make that choice yourself. Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. So I want to start by saying, I agree with everything Counselor Trosaw said about his concerns around C and the history of the five bedrooms. I supported, in fact, I seconded this at committee, because as Counselor Frank said, I also would like some more information to come back. And I'll tell you why I'd like some more information to come back. Because I think it's relevant to the referral and to Counselor Trosaw's concern about the boarding house rules. Even with the five-bedroom cap, we are not stopping people, unscrupulous, often unlicensed landlords, from jamming people into homes. You can find examples around the city where there are 12 people living in a three-bedroom home, sharing rooms, because that's how they're making it affordable, making ends meet. And often it is in the near-campus neighborhoods. Even where they don't have five bedrooms, they're cramming those students in regardless of the bylaws and often without a rental unit license in place. That was actually why I had added clause C to the report as well, because we see neighborhoods suffering from parking overflow from the result of this over-cramming of people into these homes. So I understand Counselor Trosaw's ask. I'm listening to the debate, and I'm honestly struggling on whether I want to support the referral or whether I want staff to come back with some more information and then dive into this a little more deeply. Because I think the boarding house by law does have a role to play in this. I think the rental unit license by law has a role to play in this. I don't think this is simply a matter of a five-bedroom limit. I think that there's some other pieces that come into this. And so that's why I'm leaning towards not supporting the referral, because as Counselor Frank said, this is not going to rise to the top. I know Mr. Mather's and Ms. McNeely and their teams have more than enough work, probably to keep them busy for the whole term of council, let alone adding to their plate. But I do want them, when time allows, to come back to us with some further thought on how we can control this situation. Because it's not actually just the number of bedrooms. It's how we're controlling the jamming of people into housing that doesn't fit the reasonable number of people. I know we have a piece, and I will just ask for a little clarity through staff. Is the, I believe there's a restriction on habitability that limits the total number of occupants in a home to 100 square meters per occupant. But I'm not sure where that falls in our bylaws and licensing either. I know that's been referred to by staff in terms of rental unit license inquiries I've sent in before. But can staff clarify where that piece falls?
Mr. Mather's.
Through you, your worship, my understanding is that comes from the building code as an element there. So something that is quite fixed. So that's my understanding where that value comes from.
Okay, so that's helpful. So that number we're stuck with, because that's provincially regulated. So we can't do much about that. So I'm going to listen to the rest of the debate. I know that you've got another speaker or two on your list. As I said, I'm leaning towards not supporting the referral, not because I don't respect the concerns, because I think they're very, very valid. I see them even in my neighborhood, let alone in the near-campus in Ward 6. But I do need some more information on how this works moving forward. So I'm going to listen to the rest of the debate and probably make up my mind when the voting button comes up.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And just following up on Deputy Mayor's comments there, I think we all want the same thing. We do want more information. That's why I'm supporting the referral, it's that simple. I want to thank the committee for bringing the conversation. I think it's an important conversation. Counselor Frank referred to, it's got a bit of history. It's got a long history, and it is complicated. And I think before we rush into anything, we should really try to understand how it's going to affect our policies. And referring it back, eventually we'll get to the same place. So I do take note, this is coming from a counselor who represents a ward full of students. I will say that from my ward's perspective, it may not be such a challenge. But when it comes to neighborhood, near-campus neighborhoods, boarding homes, things like that, I will look to the counselor who has those challenges in his ward. So I'll be supporting the referral back, getting more information, it's that simple. I think that's what we're looking for with the committee recommendation coming to us here at council. So again, I'll support the referral.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, and I seconded Counselor Trosaw's referral. I have had properties in my ward where absentee landlords have been renting homes out, not by the home, but by the room, and turning living rooms and dining rooms into bedrooms. Turning the property into higher density, and not zone higher density, into a low-density neighborhood, and some serious issues have arisen. So I think for the reasons the counselor raised, I thought it was prudent to look for a referral and to have a discussion in that context.
Counselor Priville.
I will not be supporting the referral, because I believe that when we go back to our committee, we will discuss it, and at the end, we are going to send it to the staff anyway. So I want to be prompt, I'm going to send it, I want to make the decision today. I want the staff to do the work, and then we'll discuss it anyways when it comes back with the staff findings. So I want to be more efficient, more prompt. And we are making the decision right now that we are increasing to five, but we are going to have the legitimate information from the staff. I will not be supporting the referral.
Okay, that exhausts my speakers list. So the motion on the floor is a referral back to Planning and Environment Committee. So everybody's clear that we're voting on the referral only at this point. So I'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion fails, seven to seven.
Okay, so we still have 3.4, item C on the floor. Okay, colleagues, so Counselor Trosaw would like to speak again on this matter that's important to his ward. He's technically spoken to this motion, then he moved a referral, we went to something else. So I would seek if colleagues want to provide leave for him to speak a second time to this matter. So to move an amendment... So I would look to see if colleagues are willing to give the councillor leave to speak again, because the councillor has spoken once at council on this matter, then attempted to take an action, that action wasn't successful, there's been a speakers list on the action. So I deem him to have spoken. So is anybody willing to move a motion to let the councillor speak again? Otherwise, he's spoken to this matter already. Counselor Frank, you're willing to let the councillor speak twice? Counselor Hopkins willing to second it? I don't think we need to debate this, whether they're going to let him speak again or not. So we'll... OK. We could do this by hand now, colleagues. We're going to do this by hand, but I want you to keep your hands up, because the clerk needs to count them, OK? So the motion is to let the councillor speak a second time at council, notwithstanding our procedures. All those in favor?
That motion carries.
OK, thank you. Counselor, go ahead.
I'd like to, through the chair and to the clerk, I would like to amend C to also include in the report, in the report back, a consideration of the boarding house bylaw and the rental registration bylaw, because I think they're related. So rent registration bylaw, boarding house bylaw would be added to the step, what's going to step. I think we'd get a much more useful report back.
So councillor, there's a seconder for your motion. Just want to make sure you don't want to speak to it while you're here, because you've got the motion on the floor, it's moved and seconded, you can speak to it now.
Yes, you can sit down. OK. You cannot separate, you cannot separate, and this is the lived reality of my neighborhood, you cannot separate out the five-bedroom limit without considering what goes on in those five units, in those five bedrooms. And you also cannot separate out the extent to which the owners are complying with the underlying registration requirement. Now, I have very serious concerns that that could be stepped up, but I also have very serious concerns that the boarding house bylaw is not being enforced. And it's a very difficult bylaw to enforce, because you have to get inside, you have to get inside, and you have to sort of, you have to play detective, and you have to look at things like, are there locks on the doors? Or are there other latches? Or have there been rental, have there been rental advertisements that make it clear that what's being rented out is not a rental unit? A rental unit means, regardless of how many bedrooms are in it, that the tenants of that unit have the right to possession of that unit. And a boarding house is very different, because in a boarding house, you have the right to possession of your room, and you have shared possession of everything else. Now, that may seem like it's the same thing, but from a legal point of view, these are very different. I don't think we've spent a lot of time since, I don't think we've spent a lot of time since the Ashworth case came out, talking about the implications of the litigation in Ottawa. And I think a lot more thought needs to be given to the boarding house and the registration requirements. And as long as we're going to potentially open up this five, the five-bedroom discussion, I think for balance, and for the, in the interest of consumer protection, I think we need to also look at these other two matters. So I would put that forward as an amendment. Thank you.
So that's moved and seconded, it's on an amendment now, so new speakers list. You get to speak again now. You don't have to, but you can. So I'll look for any speakers to the amendment. It's moved and seconded. Counselor Frank.
Thank you, yes. I don't mind adding these two things. I think, again, I kind of cleared it off in peck, but to reiterate, I understand that there are near neighborhood, sorry, near-campus neighborhood concerns. I think, again, since this policy applies to the entire city, perhaps there is an ability to separate those two concerns, but moving forward, I do see the councillor's desire to have as much safety for the public as possible. So I don't mind adding that, and I hope staff are able to, I guess, pull what they will from the two documents to add to this review. That all being said, I think, again, we do need to move forward on this. I think when we're looking at ARUs now as well, it's a bit of a different landscape. You know, one house, like one unit with five bedrooms in it, I can see a lot of this boarding house stuff applying to. But if there's a house with two units upstairs, two units downstairs, and two in the back, all separate, all different locks, all, you know, maybe there are three semi-professional couples, this is a different discussion, and I don't want to prevent an affordable housing opportunity for somebody to have access to. So happy to have these two things looked at. Again, this isn't top of my list, and I think that staff have a bunch of stuff to get through in the next year, but happy to have these two things added for consideration, also keeping in mind that I'm hoping that this will be looked at, not only at the near-campus neighborhoods, but the ability to have more than five-bedroom units on a parcel of land in other areas of the city where the concerns are different.
I have Counselor Pelosi next on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy to support this, and thank you for to the councillor for his advocacy on this and realizing it's just not a downtown issue or a close-to-campus issue, recognizing there are multiple campuses for post-secondary education institutions throughout the city, and as housing becomes more sparse or out of reach for many, many people are taking leeway on their own to set up different units, renting out bedrooms, subletting other things. So thank you for the work and happy to support this.
Those are the speakers I have on the amendment. It's moved and seconded, so we'll open the amendment for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
OK, now I need a mover and a seconder for 3.4C as amended. Deputy Mayor Lewis is willing to move, seconded by Counselor McAllister. Any discussion on 3.4C as amended?
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
OK, and now Chair, if you could put the rest of 3.4 on the floor.
I will put the remainder of 3.4 on the floor.
OK, any discussion on the rest of 3.4? OK, seeing none, we'll open that for voting. Sorry, before we open the vote, I need a seconder for that, because there was technical amendment to it earlier, so Counselor Hopkins is willing to second. OK, 3.4 as amended from the technical amendments on the floor, excluding C, which we've already dealt with.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, I will go to Item 15, just 3.6, 644-646 here on Street. We have a housekeeping amendment, amended the zoning bylaw in Clause B in Section 1 to correct the zoning amendment to R8-4 zone, and to remove the reference in Section 2 to the exterior side yard. So I will put that amendment on the floor.
OK, so the Chair puts the original on the floor and then moves an amendment. I need a seconder for the amendment. Counselor Hopkins, any discussion on the amendment?
Counselor Trossell? Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
And I will put Item 15 as amended on the floor.
OK, and a seconder for the as amended motion. Counselor Cuddy, any discussion on the motion as amended? OK, seeing none, we'll open that for voting, too.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you. That concludes the ninth reporting of Planning and Environment Committee.
Thank you very much. That brings us to 8.5, the 10th Report of Corporate Services Committee. I will turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I'm going to put the 10th Report of the Corporate Services Committee on the floor. Before I seek to see if anybody wants anything pulled to be voted on separately, if you'll indulge me in a little introduction, because I think I might be able to assist right away on whether we need to pull anything or vote on it separately. Item 9, 4.1 from the committee agenda, the Budweiser Gardens expansion and renovation proposal. I just want to be clear on what was done at committee, so that colleagues know what we're voting on before they decide whether they need it voted on separately or not. First, we received the staff report for information. Second, in Clauses B and C, we're directing the civic administration to prepare amending agreements. Those agreements have to come back before the committee and then ultimately before council, before they are ratified. And then we added a D to this at committee, which included the direction to civic administration to also, at the same time as they bring forward the amending agreements, to bring forward a more thorough review of the financial case for the proposed expansion, including the overview of the city's return on investment from the expected from the proposed phases of the expansion in comparison to the ROI of the current agreements that we have. So before we make a decision, when these ultimately, when these amending agreements come back, we will be able to compare the proposed return on investment moving forward, as well as how that looks in relation to the existing return on investment that we are getting from the current deal. So in both cases, these agreements are going to come back for a final discussion at committee and a final approval. But we do need to direct staff on whether or not they're preparing an amending agreement before they can bring that additional information back to us. So it's a little bit complicated because of the order of operations on things, but I hope that explanation makes it easier for colleagues to digest, because there was a lot of information on this item, so I hope that makes it a little easier for folks to digest what direction the committee provided. So I have not been made aware of anything that people specifically want pulled to be voted on separately, but I would seek the will of the council before I put the entire report on the floor.
OK, I'm going to look to see who would like stuff pulled separately. Counselor Frank.
Thank you, yes, I'd like to pull Item 9.
OK, good try, but we're going to have nine separate. Anybody want anything else separate? OK, I'll go to the Chair. Oh, Counselor Mayor Birgman, go ahead. What would you like separate?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If we could pull seven and eight, and if it's feasible, vote on both of them at the same time.
OK, so seven and eight separate, but you're OK to do them together? OK, so I'll let the Chair take that as a note for the motions he needs to craft. Anyone else? OK, Chair.
All right, so I am going to move the entire committee report with the exception of Items 7, 8, and 9.
Chair, before you finish crafting that motion, there is some additional information from the clerk related to items that you have contained within that motion, which is Items 4.3 and 4.4, which the committee referred back to civic administration for further information regarding the organization's connections to London. I could tell you if we proceed with the referral back, there's no additional information that has come now before council. So the dates for those proclamations would pass before we would even get the information back. So there's a couple of alternatives. They could be pulled, we could approve them irrespective of not having the information, or we could just receive them. But either way, no information has been provided between the committee and council. So I leave that in your hands. Certainly, we can approve them as is, but they're going to come back to the committee with probably no more additional information after the dates that the proclamations were requested. So if you want to deal with those separately, we could, but I just, that's an additional piece of information the clerk had that I'll share with you as you craft your motions.
All right, while never being a fan of referrals for referral's sake, I will then move Items 1 through 6 and 10 from the committee report, and we will deal with other items separately.
OK, so 1 through 6 and Item 10, so that's everything with the exception of the two expropriations that Counselor Mayor Birgman wanted separately, the request by Counselor Frank to deal with Budweiser Gardens separately, and the two proclamations that a committee referred. Those will all not be in this motion, everything else is. Any discussion on the stuff that's in the motion? 1 through 6 and 10? OK, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
OK, I will now put Items 7 and 8 from the committee report on the floor. These are expropriation of lands related to the East London Link project and the expropriation of lands related to the Wellington Gateway project.
OK, that's moved by the Chair. Any discussion on these?
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Go ahead.
OK, Your Worship, I am now going to put Item 9, this is the Budweiser Gardens expansion and renovation proposal, on the floor. I will note that Counselor Frank pulled this. I will also note, with apologies, Your Worship, that you had actually sent a note saying that there was an amendment to this coming. So I don't know whether that's an amendment from you or from Counselor Frank, so I don't know whether I want to turn to you first or to Counselor Frank, but you both wanted this item pulled, so I leave it in your hands as the Chair as to who's going to go first on this one.
I'm going to let Counselor Frank lead this one. I'm going to let Counselor Frank lead this one, and so I will go to her on the speakers list.
Thank you. Yes, it's always fun when somebody pulls something. You're like, what's going on? This, I feel like I gave a sneak peek on Tuesday. So this is following up with discussions about having city-owned assets coming to us for renewal. When they come for renewal, if they're not going to get another significant investment in the next 30 years, making sure they're on track to our net zero climate emergency target. So we have circulated an amendment to the clerks to have pulled up on the screen. But essentially, we're hoping to, and the mayor said he would second. So in support of our climate emergency action plan and net zero goal, civic administration be directed to work with OVG 360 to bring forward existing and contemplated plans for energy efficiency retrofits to Budweiser Gardens and offer support for any applications to financial grant programs for the contemplated upgrades. So this, again, is trying to bring all of the assets in line to our net zero plans and hoping to get your support in working with the private partner on the Bud to make sure that we can bring it in line with everything.
Okay, and I express my willingness to second that. I have myself on the speakers list next, so I'll turn the chair over to Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, and I'll go to the mayor.
Yes, so Counselor Frank and I discussed this, and I'm happy to second it. There was also an "it being noted" that we wanted to add in that said "it being noted" that sources of grant applications could include federal provincial grants, grants from the FCM Green Municipal Fund. I'm supportive of this because, first off, I think getting that information along with the upgrades to a major facility that is owned by the city and ultimately will fall under our full control one day is just due diligence. We do have a climate emergency action plan. Understanding how our assets will be invested in is important, and my understanding from speaking with our deputy city manager on this is that there is a plan that they have in place that could be brought to us fairly quickly so we could see it alongside. I would also note that it's not just necessarily grants or municipal contributions that would be needed to make those energy efficient upgrades to the facility. There is an actual portion of the agreement where a maintenance and improvement fund can be used. It kind of comes off of the profits that get shared by both the city, sorry, the revenue piece that both the city and OVG 360 share. And that is also used for these sorts of investments. So us just having a much clearer picture of what the plans are, both current and moving forward, as we contemplate major investments to the facility, I think is just a responsible thing to do. And I'm happy to receive that information at the same time. And my understanding is it's not a tremendous amount of work for staff to pull that together because there's been a good portion of work already done on this with, in partnership with our provider. And I would invite, if the deputy city manager feels like there's anything that needs to be added to this for context on that sort of information, I would ask through the chair that she share any information that feel is relevant to this motion that would give colleagues some more context.
I'll go to staff.
Thank you through the chair. So I do, did receive a little bit of information, actually, from the management team at the Budweiser Gardens. So I think one clarification that I will make is it is not actually a city-owned asset. The city owns the land, which we lease to the trust. The building is actually held by the trust at the moment. It does not become a City of London asset until the lease expires in 2050. So just to provide that clarification. However, Budweiser Gardens is actually through the OVG, the Oakview Group, which purchased Spectra, that was previously the manager. They actually were a founding member as part of a program called GOAL, which stands for Green Operations and Advanced Leadership. So it's a sustainability program that is for arenas and sports and entertainment venues. So they are actually operating underneath that. And through this program, they actually have a digital portal that provides them to linkages, to provide metrics, and have data-driven decisions on how to best implement solutions over the course. And they're actually in the process of trying to connect with Mr. Stanford so they can actually see if there's things that the city might be able to benefit, perhaps through actually participating in this. So through their normal operations, this is something they've already done, full energy efficiency. There are things, as they have to do life cycle renewal, start to already do. And I have a number of things in terms of their living walls, some of the food and beverage operations that have already implemented to be sustainable. So I'm sure they will be happy to share a list of the things that they're doing as they continue and begin to implement more things through their normal operations. So certainly, they will not be waiting for the additional expansion and renovations to implement. They have already done a number of things, and I'm sure they will be happy to share them with city council to bring that forward in our future report.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks for that additional context from the deputy city manager. And I just want to be clear that when I said "becomes a city-owned asset", I meant at the end of the next 30 years after the lease is completed. But it is a significant property in the city, something that we work with them in partnership with. And so I think us having a very clear picture of what those plans are as we work on our climate emergency action plan and our goals alongside over that 30-year period is actually the timeframe that we're looking to make substantive change, I think, is a responsible course for us to take. So I hope colleagues support the motion.
Thank you. And I'll turn the chair back to the mayor with Deputy Mayor Lewis and Counselor Farrar on the speakers list.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. With regard to the amendment, I am happy to speak in support of this. And I will say that I'm particularly happy with the "it being noted" clause because I see that, I read between the lines that Counselor Frank is happy to start taking on the work in her new role as a board member with FCM to help us access the Green Municipal Fund. I know that was an opportunity she and I both took when we were in Toronto to learn a little more about that. That goes to show you the value of attending some of these conferences. We come home with some good ideas, and this one makes a lot of sense to me. So I will just extend virtually my hand to Counselor Frank and see if she needs help getting some Green Municipal Fund dollars to help with this. I am standing by, ready to assist.
Counselor Farrar.
And thank you, and through you. I just also want to thank Counselor Frank and the mayor for bringing this to council. I do believe, just from our conversation in the last SPPC meeting, I believe it was, just for the climate emergency action plan, everything is going to be coming seemingly by case-by-case basis. So I do feel that this is a great start, and I would believe that there's more to come in the future. So I just wanted to also convey my support for this, speaking to this amendment on this aspect. And I do want to speak to the original motion, so you might as well put me on the speaker list there as well. But I just wanted to echo what I've heard in council here, and thank you to both of you.
Sure, I'll add you to the main motion speakers list, but we'll continue on with the amendment. I don't have any other speakers to the amendment at this time. So if there are none, we'll have the amendment only for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, so I need a mover and a second for the "as amended" motion now. Chair is willing to do that. Counselor Cuddy is willing to second it. Counselor Farrar, you're next on the speakers list for the whole, the whole motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you again. So from our last conversation that we had at committee regarding this, when I said I wasn't convinced, I did do a bit of legwork. I've been going back and forth with the city treasurer a lot. She's been extremely helpful, so I thank you for that. And I have had a meeting with Tourism London, and I have been told, and I'm pretty confident, that just the concerns with what I was thinking with the Tourism Infrastructure Reserve Fund and that being depleted and the possibility that other monies that could be used or other funding, that fund could fund other cases, I was concerned with that. And I was also concerned with possible pressure on the taxpayer base. But just speaking with the city treasurer, it is quite clear to me that that is, there's not a chance for that to happen. The Tourism Infrastructure Reserve Fund that's funded by the MAT tax seems to be highly scoped, and that scope seems to fit with Budweiser Gardens. So I'm pretty confident that we shouldn't have any issues with that, just from what I've heard so far. So I just wanted to also give my support for Budweiser Gardens, and I will be supporting the motion as it is right now. So I just wanted to say that, just because from what I've heard from residents and just having discussions after that committee meeting, I've had people come through that seemed that they weren't necessarily very clear on where the funding would come from. So that's why I was going back and forth, really trying to just get that information. So at this point, I'm pretty confident the way it is, so you'll see me supporting this vote.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I'll be supporting the recommendation coming out of committee. I want to, first of all, thank the committee for the work that they did. I did not view the YouTube on it, but I'm sure there was a bit of legwork. The added recommendation on getting a review for the financial case, I really appreciate that. I think as a council, we really need to understand the complexity of Budweisers. We're not approving anything here. We're just getting the information that we need for the agreements and everything to come back. So with that, again, thank you to the committee for your hard work on this.
Counselor Trosow.
Thank you, and through the chair. I'm going to be supporting the measure that's in front of us today, but I want to make it really clear that there's a long way to go on this in terms of getting the information that I need in order to satisfy the questions that I raised at the committee. I still have those concerns. And my understanding, and it's been repeated by the deputy mayor, it's been repeated by a number of people, we're not approving this today. We are getting, we are asking the staff to undertake certain document preparation, but we are getting, we are getting more detail, and I don't think we're at the decision point on this today. And with that understanding, I don't have a problem with supporting this. Having said that, though, I want to say that I still do not understand, and I hope we get some more clarity on this. The current, the current food operation, the contract for the current food operation goes through 2027. And part of what we're being asked to do here in its entirety, which we're not approving today, is to extend the 2027 end date to 2051. And I'm having a hard time understanding what is, what is so, what needs to be done right away since this is not expiring until 2027, and why we would, why we would, why we would include such a long extension date. So I still have a lot of questions about that. So the fact that I'm not going to be voting against this today, I want to make clear my concerns about the fact that we do not have adequate funds in the accommodation fund right now to pay for this by a long shot. And we are going to have to incur debt. And I think that we're going to have to understand what the implications of that are. I don't believe that we're being asked to incur that debt through this motion today. I want to make, want to make that clear. So I am not backtracking on the earlier concerns that I raised about the 80-20 split. Why 80? The fact that in terms of on the revenue side, it's going to go from 70-30 to 60-40? Why that, why that drop? I mean, I think that these are all things that still need to be explained. And with that, I'm happy to support this motion today. And I do want to thank, again, the mayor for helping us out of the conundrum that we were in at the committee in terms of adding the additional language that sort of satisfies my need to get more information. So with that, I think we're okay today. Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor. I hope we're okay most days, but appreciate your comments. Other speakers to this. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, and I think those concerns mentioned by Counselor Trosow and Counselor Hopkins and touched on by Counselor Farrar are valid. The councils prior to us that initially did this project, I commend. It was transformational, I believe, in our downtown, and I think it's paying dividends for what we're seeing being built downtown for people choosing to live downtown. I think it's been a good partnership. It was a good financial model, one that I understand is being copied by other communities across Canada. Very prescient in what was designed back then. That being said, we're at this point now, and it's incumbent upon us to protect the city's investment and the city's return on investment. I'm not against debt financing as long as it produces a good return on investment, factoring in the cost of that debt. We have, have had a good partner in Spectrum, which is now OVG 360. I think that was further reinforced by Ms. Barbone's comments about how they're climate-aware and in their, in their projects, in their ownership across this one and others. They've been successful. The major tenant, the Knights, have been very financially successful, and I would argue we've been successful as a city. And that's a good business partnership where all partners benefit. So I will look for the details that come out in the coming negotiations and what's presented to us to make sure that, from our point of view, because I represent the city and the city taxpayers, that we are getting of a sizable investment. Which, by the way, I don't, I don't diminish that. It's a building that has aged. Hard to believe, but the building has had decades into it now. And it's time. You have to protect your assets, and I think this is a good way to go. But like I said, and what I've heard from other counselors here, is we will be doing our, our job of protecting our interests. Thank you.
Other speakers? Okay, seeing none, the "as amended" motion is moved on the floor. I'll just note Counselor Plosas has had to leave the meeting, so she won't be participating in this vote. And we'll open that vote for voting.
I vote yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
So Deputy Mayor, I know you've got a couple other items. We've still got all the bylaws to go through. There's a closed session report. It's been about 2 hours and 40 minutes. I'd look to see if colleagues might want to take a 10-minute break at this point. I see people nodding, so I know we're not quite done your report, but I think now is a good time because we can come back with some options on those, on those proclamations as well. So I'll look for a mover of a 10-minute break. Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Frank. All those in favor by hand?
Motion carries.
If you're online, if you could just give an acknowledgement to the clerk so we can count you here or not. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so where we left off was in the middle of the CSC report. There's two items left. I'll turn it back over to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. So we just have two items left to deal with on the 10th report of the Corporate Services Committee. Those are two applications for proclamation where the committee recommendation was to refer them back for more information. More information has not been received, and as noted at the start of this committee report, the application days will have passed before this referral lands back at another committee. So the committee recommendation is to refer. I'm going to suggest to colleagues that it would be best to defeat the referral, and then we can dispense with these either as a motion to receive them, or if colleagues want to do something different, we can do something different at that point. But first, we need to defeat the referral. So I will put the committee recommendation for the referral on the floor, and we'll be voting against it.
Okay, so the recommendation is on the floor for us to take a different action, which the action in the committee report is essentially obsolete at this point. Looking to see if colleagues are willing to defeat this. So that's open for voting, and we will vote now.
Closing the vote. Motion fails 0 to 13.
So now, unless a colleague wants to do something different, I'm prepared to put a motion to receive. The application's on the floor, and that's all we would do is just receive them.
Okay, that's a new motion. So I'll look for a second for receipt. Okay, I see Counselor Hopkins. Any discussion on the new motion to receive? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Trosow.
No, I support this motion. I'm a member of the committee. I just want to say something that I often say at the committee, and that is when the applications come in, and on the face of the applications, they're not complete, to the committee, and we have to go through this and report back up council. So this may not be the place to do it, but ultimately, I would like to encourage whoever receives these applications to send them back if on the face of it, it's not complete. And I'd be looking for some guidance from the clerk in terms of how to facilitate that, because we do this at every meeting.
I'm going to have the clerk explain the process so colleagues understand what they do with these applications. Go ahead, clerk.
Thank you. And through the chair, so once these are received, we do review them for general completeness. If committee indicates to us that there is a concern such as here where there's a referral, we will reach out to them. We have considered, based on this repeated committee discussion about concern, about direct connection to the City of London, we have looked at the form and made that clear to applicants, and we're reviewing other options such that that application process is highlighted and the information sought by the committee during its consideration is emphasized to applicants.
Okay, so the new motion to just receive, the first one, is on the floor. I don't have anybody else on the speakers list, so we'll open that receipt for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 0.
Deputy Mayor.
And now, colleagues, we will repeat this process for item 12, the application for issuance of proclamation for World Sickle Cell Day. Again, the committee recommendation was to refer. We have to defeat that first, and then we can proceed with dispensing to receive.
Okay, so the original committee motion is on the floor for voting. I'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion fails 2 to 11.
Deputy Mayor.
Okay, with the committee recommendation defeated, I will now move that we receive the application.
Okay, the new motion to receive the application needs a second. I'll look for a second. I need a second for that. Counselor Ferrera, thank you. So this is the new motion to receive. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 0.
And that completes the 10th report of the Corporate Services Committee.
Okay, thank you. Well, don't go anywhere because there's an 11th report of the Corporate Services Committee. So if you want to get back up, you can do that one.
Thank you, Worship. I am now happy to move item 8.6 on the council agenda, the 11th report of the Corporate Services Committee. This was a special Corporate Services Committee. There is only one item on the agenda aside from disclosures of key area interest, which was a confidential matter, so that will fall under council reports of closed session. So I will just move the report, which is simply the approval of disclosures of key area interest.
Okay, so moved. I can't imagine there would be discussion on this. Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 0.
And that completes your 11th report of the Corporate Services Committee.
Excellent. We're on to added reports, which includes the ninth report of council in closed session. Counselor Ferrera made eye contact with me at the wrong time, so he's volunteered to read out our council in closed session report. So I'll turn it over to the counselor for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, I was voluntold, but that's okay. I'll take it. Reporting out at the ninth report of council in closed session, to lease agreement for the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Fanchow Golf Course, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager finance supports with the concurrence of deputy city manager neighborhood and community-wide services, on the advice director realty services with respect to the lease agreement for the lease of ground spaces at the Fanchow Golf Course, the lease agreement between the city and the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, the landlord, for the lease of the Fanchow Golf Course lands for a term of 10 years at an annual rent of $40,500 prior to taxes payable, which is comprised of Part 1, Reference Plan 33R-14008, containing an area of approximately 7.07 acres or 2.86 hectares, and Part 4, Reference Plan 33R-14008, containing an area of approximately 65.98 acres, 26.7 hectares, be approved, it being noted that the rent payable is retroactive to June 1st, 2022.
Okay, so that's moved by the counselor. I'll look for any debate or discussion on that motion. Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 0.
Thank you very much. Deferred matters, there are none. Inquiries, I know there is one inquiry from Counselor Van Meirberggen who flagged it for me before the from Counselor Van Meerebergen who flagged it for me before the meeting. I appreciate that. So I'll turn it to you for your inquiry, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My inquiry has to do with the Bell Five dig project and this is a large, as many of us know, private infrastructure project that's being conducted by Bell primarily on city-owned property in the form of boulevards and such in front of residential homes and the like. And I've received in the Westmount area literally dozens and dozens of complaints, not because of the infrastructure project itself on the five network and the upgrades, which is all great, but there isn't any follow-up in terms of remedying the properties, remedying the boulevards, et cetera, to restore what they were prior to the construction work. So what we're left with are a series of big holes filled with gravel, exposed water, exposed cable, and it's not being fixed. In the Westmount area, work was conducted in the winter and we were told that by May the 15th, per the agreement with the City of London and Bell, by May the 15th, it would be rectified. That hasn't happened. And so my question to staff is, can we have an update as to where this situation currently sits? And what can the city do to expedite the required remediation? And why can the residents of Westmount expect their properties, in the front of their properties, to be rectified?
Okay, so that broke up a little bit, but I think we, I see nods that we got the gist of everything you're saying and I believe our staff are confident that they can give you an answer. So I'll go to our staff.
Thank you, worshiping Counselor Van Meerebergen for the inquiry. Staff are well aware of the issues caused throughout the city related to the Bell Fiber upgrade and in fact have actually arranged a meeting with the vice president in charge of this project from Bell for Monday involving senior staff from both Mr. Mayther's area and mine. We do have some mechanisms at our disposal. We have a one-year clause built into the master agreement for renewal, which we will be visiting with them and we could, should that not succeed, consider not providing any new permits until restoration is complete on existing works. So we will be working with Bell's senior management on Monday. We take this matter quite seriously from both a permit of approved works as well as a utility coordination perspective. It's an inconvenience, but it's also a safety issue in some cases. We're on it and I will report back as required.
Okay, Counselor, go ahead.
Can staff indicate roughly, and I realize it's roughly, one residence can expect some action in terms of actually getting some of, getting these properties rectified to the original state?
Go ahead.
Your worship, my understanding is that several rectifications do date back many weeks. We will be asking for an updated plan indicating when they'll be making full restoration based on the date of original disturbance. I don't have that information from the utility yet, but we will be requiring that from them.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
And just one last follow-up. If it could be notified, because I don't think I'm the only counselor with this situation. If we could be notified once you have that information, that would be most appreciated.
Yeah, I see lots of nods on that, so that will happen, Counselor. Thanks for the inquiry. So I see another counselor putting their hand up. So inquiries are not like where a bunch of counselors jump in. One counselor will ask a specific inquiry of staff, staff will answer. It's not a debate. So Counselor Trosaw, is it on this or is it on something different?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that up. Bell, let's talk. We've got to do something about this.
Counselor, appreciate the witty comment, but that's completely out of order given our procedures. So we're going to, so inquiry has been asked, answered. Appreciate our staff doing that and thank you for raising that for all of us, Counselor Van Meerebergen. I think it impacts a large part of the city. Emergent motions, there are none. Bylaws, we have a number. I will say, this is how I intend on proceeding with the bylaws, so if counselors would like it done differently, let me know. My intent is to deal with a package of bylaws ranging from 164 to 169, 172 to 183, and the added 184 related to the in-camera piece. So what that will exclude are the two bylaws that Counselor Van Meerebergen asked to be separate related to expropriation. So those would be dealt with separately. So unless someone wants something different than that, that's how I'm going to proceed with two sets of votes. One is everything except Counselor Van Meerebergen's desire to vote on something separate and then the motions that he wanted to vote on separate. Okay? That looks good. So I see everybody nodding. So the first set of bylaws, Counselor Van Meerebergen, will not include the ones related to expropriation, but it'll include every other bylaw, all of the adjusted, amended, revised bylaws based on the changes we made at the committee reports from Counselor Lehman and the added bylaw that comes out of the in-camera session. So I'll look for a mover for that. Counselor Hopkins and a secondar. Counselor Trosaw. No debate on first reading, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries thirteen to zero.
And second reading and a secondar. Counselor Ferreira, seconded by Counselor Ramon. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries thirteen to zero.
Okay, a mover for third reading. Counselor Ferreira and seconded by Counselor Cuddy. No debate on third reading, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries thirteen to zero.
Okay, next I'll look for a mover for bylaws 171, 171, which were related to expropriations for the East London Link and the Wellington Gateway Project. Mover, Counselor Trosaw, secondar, Counselor Hopkins. There is no debate on first reading, so we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries twelve to one.
Mover for reading of those bylaws. Moved by Counselor Ferreira, seconded by Counselor Hillier. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries twelve to one.
Third reading of the bills moved by Counselor McAllister, seconded by Counselor Lehman. There's no debate on third reading, so we will open that for voting.
Closing the vote motion carries twelve to one.
That brings us to adjournment. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Trosaw, seconded by Counselor McAllister. We do this by hand. All those in favor of adjournment?
That motion carries.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Hope to see you at the vigil tonight.